Okay, we're recording, so Dan or Mitch, whoever would like to start the presentation today regarding the permit exempt ag structures and buildings.
Will do. Go ahead. I'll go ahead and start. I'll just give a brief summary of the history of the ag exemption. And looking forward today to, to expected outcomes of today's work session is to see if we, there are any further questions the council has, concerns, any additional research you'd like us to do, any guidance that you'd like us to, to take in order to prepare properly for any upcoming changes or revisions. Essentially, since 1979, there has been some form of exemption for construction of agricultural structures in the county. 1979, then Duane Karenin, a division manager and a manager in Clark County Public Works issued a memo to his team advising that effective immediately, we shall discontinue requiring and issuing building permits for agricultural buildings. He also advised that all persons who inquire about county requirements for ags buildings should be reminded that all zoning restrictions concerning setbacks are still in effect. And that was the, the first record that we have where there an exemption was put in place. Subsequently, in two separate ordinances, the Clark County Residential Code was amended and formally accepting ag buildings as defined in, and from, from building code, from the scope of the building code. And that's important because the building code is only, only regulates building construction and building construction permits, plan reviews, and, and inspections. It does not regulate zoning, stormwater, environmental, and other related codes. Finally, Clark County's code section 1406 105.2, under work exempt from permit specifically states exemptions from permit requirements of this code shall not be deemed to grant authorization for any work to be done in any manner in violation of the provisions of this code, or any other laws or ordinances of this jurisdiction. This leads us to today. In, in 2019, as at the time I was Community Development Director, working to get through some complaints that we had received regarding unpermitted ag structures, I began a review of this, of the ag structure exemption, and found that generally there was not a lot of accountability in regard to following through with the other permitting types. It was kind of hit and miss. So we began the process of looking at policy changes, internal policy changes to begin to follow the codes specifically, and in particular 14.06 105.2, which essentially required other aspects of code compliance to be, to be enforced as it pertained to ag structures, whether they were exempt from building scope, or building permitting scope or not. That leads us to where we are today. We have, Dave, as you may recollect, provided feedback to council and recommendations. Some of their recommendations have been incorporated in a draft ordinance, which you've all been provided. That was drafted by Lindsay Schaefer in a first attempt to, to make some revisions. Subsequently, council asked for additional information pertaining to stormwater management and critical area application of those codes, and whether or not those could similarly be exempted. With that, I'll turn this over to Dan and his team, Brent Davis, also with our Wetland and Habitat Program to, to discuss those aspects of the code as it may apply to ag exempt structures and exemptions. Be happy to take any questions at the end of this presentation, if, if you don't mind. I know time is of, of the essence.
Good morning, Council. Dan Young, Director of Community Development. I just wanted to talk real quick about what our process is for people that want ag exemptions. As of right now, if somebody wants to get an ag structure permit exemption, they will email permit staff. Permit staff sends them back, and I sent it to Rebecca, and I think you guys have it, what we send out to the customer. They get us their information that we've asked for. We put it in an MIS permit, which is a miscellaneous permit for tracking. There is no fee for this, but during the review, one of our permit texts will look at it, and they look at GIS, GIS, and if there are any layers there that require more information or, you know, review, especially with, due to wetland hab, then we send it to wetland hab. There's a $42 fee for a review. And I'll let Brent talk about this, but I think like 70 to 80%, just that's it. They find out that there's nothing else that needs to be done. The other 20 to 30%, then there are concerns, issues with wetland habitat, that kind of stuff. The other requirement that may be triggered is if you have slopes over 15% of geotech is required. And that's for slopes over 15%. If the application does not have any triggers like this, then the staff will then basically issue the MIS permit, which is an ag exempt for the building codes. But like I said, the staff will look at, you know, wetland hab and that kind of stuff. But that's what our process is right now. So the only thing right now that would cost money is the $42 review fee. Now, during that time, if other issues come up, then yes, there may be more fees due to the wetland mitigation stuff that has to happen. But right now, that's our process. And then I will turn it over to Brent real quick, and he can talk about some of the stuff that, that has happened with the wetland hab. So, and just like Mitch, if you have questions, please ask them. I also have April here with the Permit Center Manager to answer questions on that process. So Brent, if you could talk about the wetland hab portion of this, please.
Good morning, councilors. I'm Brent Davis, the Wetland and Habitat Review Manager. As Dan indicated, roughly 75% of, of these MIS ag structure applications don't trigger additional review. We do charge $42 when there is the GIS indicators mapped on the site. And then we do an in-office review, and that, that 30%, we may be able to, at that point, contact the applicant and ask them if they can relocate their building to avoid the issue, and not incur any additional review or fees. If that's not possible, we generally have to charge for a site inspection to go out and verify what they actually have on the ground. At that point, we may determine that what they're proposing doesn't require any further work. However, again, we may try to work with them at that point to relocate their structure to avoid a critical areas permit. If they can't do that, and it can meet the code criteria for avoidance and minimization, then we would require the appropriate critical areas permit to allow them to move forward. So, one of the things that we do run into a lot with these is, is a number of them come to community development after the fact. And, you know, once we get out, we get out there and find out that they, it appears that they have actually already constructed it in a critical area, that gets pretty difficult to unwind. We often struggle to determine what the actual impact was, because once they've done the work and disturbed the site, it's difficult to, to know where the critical area boundary was prior to the work. But we do our best to work with folks, try and get to a solution at that point. You know, but sometimes it is difficult. One other important threshold that I think I would like to mention, it was something that occurred to me this morning before the work session, because some of these structures can be large. There is a categorical exemption for SEPA, the State Environmental Policy Act, for agricultural structures that are less than 10,000 square feet. So, another issue we can run into with large agricultural structures that are over 10,000 square feet is that they do trigger SEPA unless the project qualifies for some other categorical exemption. So that's, that's another thing that can get flagged. We don't see that very often, because most of these structures are less than that 10,000 square feet. So, that's all I've got. If you have any questions.
I had a question, Brent. I missed, I'm sorry, it just flew by me. Before you said, if there's a certain criteria, you began by this, and then, and then what you said was, if not possible, they make a site inspection and may ask for the building to be moved. What, what is the criteria that triggers that? I'm sorry.
No, it's, we do an in-office review. We look at aerial photography and the topographic mapping. We, we have data. If we've been to an adjacent property, we may have some information that we can look at regarding, you know, what, what we know is on the adjacent property. So we do all of that review, and if we can come to a conclusion without going out to the site at that point, or we can work with the applicant to make an adjustment to their plan, to avoid any areas of concern from that review, then we don't have to go out to the site and do further work.
And so this is already done. I think Dan said that you look at that, because it's a miscellaneous permit, then you look at GIS, and if there's wetlands, then, then it triggers that review, and that's a $42 thing. And that, what, 20 to 30% of those requests for this, for the permitting of these ag buildings fall into that? Is that, would you say that's the, about the correct statistic there, that 20 to 30% fall into this, where they need an inspection of the land?
Well, if you look at all of the MIS applications that come in, about 30% of them trigger the $42 review. And on average, about 20% of those trigger a field review.
Okay.
It may be 25%, but 20 to 25% of the, of the 30%.
Okay. Then, okay, one other question I had, and then I'll let other councilors ask if they have questions. You, you stated that if a building had already been built, and, you know, it must have, or went over some critical area, that it's difficult to, to discover where the critical area was. What kind of critical area? I mean, I understand that a part of this critical area thing, but why wouldn't you be able to tell where it was? Wouldn't the building itself be creating an issue because it was a critical area? Or am I not understanding that right?
Well, I mean, it depends. For instance, with wetlands, if it's out in the middle of the wetland, it's pretty straightforward, because there's wetlands all around it. But if it's at the edge, and we can see, you know, that they maybe put out some fill to support the foundation or the poles, or to create a base, and we have, we have a condition at each edge, but we don't know what was in between. Yeah, so that's generally what we run into. Or, you know, for habitat, we think there might have been an oak, a regulated oak there, but we don't know for sure, because we're only being able to look at aerial photos, and we can't verify what the tree actually was, because it's already been removed.
Okay. Are there questions of other councilors?
I have a somewhat tangential question, Brett. What's the relationship with the assessor's office? You know, from the very beginning, we heard some of the compliance has been pretty haphazard. When you find, or through your aerial views, find structures already built that weren't permitted, or, or don't comply with the ag exempt law, do you, is there an automatic forwarding to the assessor's office for, for their work on the issue?
I think that's something either Dan or April might be able to speak to, because that's, you know, more general than what we specifically deal with. We don't refer anything to the assessor's office in, in our work.
Counselor, this is Mitch Nichols. I'd like to talk a little bit about, to help answer your question, I'd like to talk about the enforcement aspect. The, the MIS permits were developed in 2019 as a means of documenting the, the ag exemptions. Up until that point, the affidavits were just filed, and we didn't actually have a process for tracking them. So that process was created. To Brent and Dan's point, the MIS permits are, represent people who are attempting to comply and with the codes and work with us. And they are truly not the challenge we face. The challenge we face comes in the form of, first, it may start as a complaint of unpermitted construction, or unpermitted grading of a new road or entry. And during our code enforcement investigation, we determine that a new structure is being built, and then we begin the investigation process to determine who in fact is, should be involved in the review to verify the violation. And that's when we refer it to the other departments to get their experts involved in the analysis of the violation. We don't typically ever refer to the assessor's office, any type of improvement, until we actually have a permit in hand. Our responsibility is to notify upon issuance of the permit that a new structure is being constructed on this property at a value of X. And that's the information the assessor utilizes to, to adjust the tax records. But that's really the only circumstance under which I can think we have the enforcement or development commit processes engage the assessor's office. Thank you.
Other questions?
Well, Madam Chair, if I may just kind of say off of what Mitch just said, or what Brett just said about the new process since 2019. Now that we have that in place, and you're exercising due diligence to ensure that ag exempt even applies, have we had any complaints or anecdotal information since 2019 that we still have an ongoing issue?
So I can, I can take that one. We have had a couple of complaints, most, mostly relevant to the cost of compliance with the codes for the ag exempt structures. It is, you know, when someone, and you heard some of this in the equestrian community feedback about the cost of, you know, the fact that they don't make a lot of money in their businesses, but the cost of construction of their buildings is prohibitive if it includes the robust permitting requirements that we have in place for those types of structures. And so they're looking for ways to mitigate some of that cost. And the permitting process is the first line of approach for that cost mitigation, because materials and construction in the buildings really can't change. They need those to meet their specific needs and area and spatial requirements. So those, that feedback has been given to us through our public engagement process and doing the, everything from rural event centers to, that were non-winery related to equestrian facilities. So we've had a number of concerns listed that says, you know, we would like to be able to utilize ag exempt structures for a broader spectrum of application across the rural areas with, with minimal permitting requirements. Thank you.
So, it sounds to me, Mitch, like those complaints are coming from the people who want to put the buildings up, not people in the community complaining about a building that was put up by somebody else. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilor.
Thank you. Yeah, so I was going to ask also about the 2019, when the MIS permits were started, so hopefully that will help a little bit. Is there any restriction on, in any zone, anywhere in the county, that would not allow an ag exempt building, permit exempt building?
I'm not aware of any at this time. The, it seems to be, the way the ag structures were permitted by the state, they were allowed in just about every district, and that could include greenhouses and small, on small lots in urban areas, inclusive.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I don't think, I don't know, I consider a greenhouse and egg structure per se. I guess it depends on how big they are. Maybe they can be, if they're that big. Yeah, they can be big, yeah. So, you know, we're having this conversation because of this building, and I believe, I'm, my concern is these large ag exempt structure, or permit exempt structures inside the urban growth boundary in residential neighborhoods. That, that's my concern. I think we, everything we need to do to keep this process as simple as we can, but also make sure that I think we should have some, some restrictions on these buildings in residential and urban neighborhoods. The concern that I have with the rural area is with regard to the stormwater manual update. So if we do, even if we did nothing on this ordinance going forward, if we make that, make that change in the stormwater manual, that will create stormwater implications for anybody who wants to build an egg structure, a permit exempt egg structure. So I just, from the council's perspective, I want to make sure that we're paying attention to that, because they're interconnected. I guess, for purposes of conversation, I would wonder what we could do to protect our residential neighborhoods from large permit exempt buildings that doesn't encroach on, or make it more difficult to put an egg structure in a rural or appropriate place, whether that's a parcel size, or, I know there's some rural lots inside the urban growth boundary, but is there some creative way that we could manage to balance those two conflicting needs?
The draft ordinance that was submitted, along with the other attachments in this presentation, does a fairly good job of setting aside some restrictions to limit the utility of ag-related buildings, ag exempt buildings, and limits that to properties where there's a valid agricultural activity occurring. And I, I think that was, that was, that was prudent. I think it addresses a lot of your concerns, and at the same time ensures that whether it may be a historically agricultural property that's been, that's been annexed into a more urban setting, they still have an opportunity as long as they meet their, as long as they meet their setback and area requirements, and there is a valid agricultural activity associated with that property, historical or otherwise. The, the nuts and bolts of that requirement and the review process that might be utilized to support that haven't been developed yet. But if council were to entertain that, we certainly would, we'd be interested in, in supporting that with some, some, some standard operating procedures for reviews and inspections, verification.
Madam Chair, and just as an ancillary thought, or something to consider, is part of the reason that these buildings were built without permits and without us knowing about it, is because it's so difficult for them to build simple buildings. And so if there was a way to have a very straightforward process, maintain this egg exemption in the rural area, but have a simple and straightforward process for basic shops and outbuildings, I think that would be helpful as well, to help eliminate these unpermitted, unknown buildings being built, because it's so difficult for them to get a permit, and so expensive.
Was that a statement or question, or rhetorical, maybe?
Well, I mean, it's something that we've had a conversation about. I think Mitch has mentioned it in the past, is, is there a simpler way for some of these outbuildings, pole barns, et cetera, to be permitted inexpensively and quickly?
I think actually, the fact that we have a process at this point really helps out. I, I'm very cautious about making new ordinancees because of a specific case. And there is a specific case that this is all being, that this all came about for. And since we don't, since the complaints that we have at this point about buildings all come from those that are building them, not people around them, I think that the process must be working. And I'd rather, my position is, I really don't want to go forward with this ordinance. I'd like to see, I'd like to watch this process work. And if we have problems from that, and of course, we want to hear from the people that are building the buildings about their complaints, we'll be, we'll be listening for that as well, to see if there's a way that we can improve the process currently going on. But I, it sounds to me like it's working. So, that would be my, as far as next steps, zero next steps with regard to the ordinance.
Madam Chair, may I, may I chime in? Were you completing? So we've kind of whipsawed Mitch a little bit over the last couple of years on, on initiatives. And it sounds like this one's working with the changes in 2019. He did just mention specifically the equestrian use and the complaints about those structures to support horse structures. And, and I understand that we have a committee that's forming, and we're going to be working on that, and hopefully delve into that aspect of the code to provide relief to the equestrian community. Along those same lines, you know, typically, the issue we have, other than wetlands, critical areas, stormwater, you know, things that are SEPA being triggered, things that we do have a public interest in, you know, it's the operational issues out in the rural community that generate the complaints, whether it's noise, dust, traffic, waste management. Those are overarching issues that I think we really need to get some, you know, grasp of. And along those same time lines too, Julie, and, you know, I was supportive of, and I think it was your initiative, based on some of your constituents, to try to expand beyond winery, some of the rural businesses that are appropriate in certain locations. We've had examples of that recently with a florist, or, or flower growing business that also wanted to have a wedding venue. You know, all that work Mitch was working on, did open houses, and I know there was a purely a 50% split against and, and in favor. So, but we, we stopped working on that entirely. So, operational impacts cut across everything that occurs out in the rural area. We, we need to be concerned about our watersheds. But right now, I, I don't want to focus on the ag exempt. I want to leave that alone, and, and continue the work we're doing with the equestrian community to make that fair and equitable, protective of neighbors, but at the same time encourage horse ownership and horse use out in appropriate areas of, of the county. So I would like to take a knee as, as well on this proposed ordinance that we did table, once we really did discover the 2019 changes that staff made that seem appropriate, and fully addressing the issue of, you know, we'll never eliminate, I guess, the blue building. There's no law that we're going to pass that's going to fix what happened there. Anyway, that, that's all I have at this point, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Lance?
Yeah, Mitch, setting aside the current draft ordinance, is there a gap between our current existing code and your current practice that does sound like it potentially is, is moving forward well, that we might need to codify or want to codify in order to better allow you to continue in this direction?
That's, that's a great question. Actually, no, there, there are no gaps there. Where our gaps are, and this is, this again, feedback from the community, is lack of resources, enforcement resources. And this is both for the sheriff's office and us, who have to respond to complaints of either unpermitted event activities at a specific location on weekends or after hours, late night noise, and stuff like that, or traffic impacts. Also with the, with the construction of the unpermitted buildings and the use of buildings that are outside their specific classification. And, and truly, that's just a resourcing issue on our end. We have And and truly, that's just a resourcing issue on our end. We have two code enforcement officers for the entire county. And we're supported as best they can by the sheriff's office on weekends and after hours for those types of complaints. But, you know, the community has reminded us repeatedly that you need to be able to get to these things. And address our complaints specifically. The codes are in place to do it. So from my perspective and our perspective, making any changes to our codes is is. Is not necessary at this time. For ag structures per se.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I don't hear you, but I see your mouth.
Yeah, I said, go ahead. Thank you. Sorry.
No problem. So I was not in on the discussion of the permit exemptions. When it came up the first time since that was before January one. But as I read the materials that were before us now, I thought, why are we making a change? And frankly, after hearing the discussion and and your comments this morning, Mitch, I. I again would feel why would we want to make a change? And for me, the answer is we don't. The the code enforcement is obviously a very different thing and applies at many different levels on many different topics. But as far as the permit exemption. I think this is an unnecessary and inappropriate step for us to take.
Madam Chair.
Comments?
Madam Chair. I just have another question. So so Mitch, so walk me through. If I were in a residential neighborhood and I wanted to build a permit exempt egg structure and I filled out the paperwork and I and. Are there any limitations to the type of building that I could? Other than standards, what are the limitation setbacks and have you if it's permit exempt? Tell me about what those exceptions might be. I just I'm not. All about trying to make new ordinances to make it difficult for people, but I just want to understand. If somebody misrepresents what they're doing or what they plan to do, or they're actually building what they say they're going to build, what impacts that might have on a neighborhood?
So to start with, as Dan pointed out, we'll do the initial in-house site plan review for with the application. To determine that the ag structure and the affidavit that they're submitting. Which I don't have the affidavit available, but it it limits the use of that structure. To agriculture related storage and to. To if you have a if you have horses, you can have a not for public use horse arena that would also be. Could be could be housed in a. An exempt ag structure, but it's a very limited use. You cannot take an ag structure. An exempt ag structure, for instance, and turn it into a garage where you are working on vehicles and using it as an accessory structure to your house. Those things are not ag related. And so it's limited in scope to the to the definition that was provided in the in the ordinance in title fourteen oh six. And. We get complaints of structures that may be unsightly or incompatible with the neighborhood. From all different types of structures, whether it's a carport, it could be completely not an ag structure. People get challenged with the proximity of structures to their property boundaries. They're too close. They pretend they they. Potentially create a fire hazard. Those types of things can be mitigated through our review process of ag structures and we do that. Where we're challenged is people that are building without permits and when we come in after the fact. And find these structures that are built without the permits, we begin the enforcement process. To unwind, as Brent pointed out, the non compliant aspects of the project. And that can include removal of the structure, relocation of the structure or permitting of the structure as something. Appropriate for its occupancy as long as it's permitted within that zoning district. Ultimately. Someone comes in and applies for an ag exempt structure, we're going to do a review under the current process. We're going to ensure that it's compliant with the. Specifics of the code for ag exempt structures and then do the essential reviews that we need to verify that there's no adverse impacts. We do not have current ordinances that restrict. Or otherwise require a design review on the structures themselves. As long as they meet the height and area restrictions within that district and they don't cover more ground than they should. And they're not taller than they should be and they're not set back or are too close to the property lines, we pretty much have to allow. Any type of design that is. That as as long as they're utilizing that structure as under for the limited ag exempt purposes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I ask Mitch, what is is there a typical setback or is the setback vary by zoning and acreage? Can can you give me an idea what the setbacks are?
You bet. Typically, for ag exempt structures, the the base setback is twenty five feet. From an adjacent property line, and if you increase the height over the allowable. Height for that particular district, then you have to move it to fifty feet or further. Depending on the depending on the size and area of the structure. One of the challenges we have in the rural areas is these large combustible structures that have been built as ag exempt structures. Have not been built with the commensurate fire protection that would be needed for first responders to actually be successful in in mitigating. The fire. They're they're going to be limited to what they bring in their vehicles to put those fires out. And their first primary focus is going to be on getting people and animals out of those structures if that hasn't already been done by the time they arrive. When you're that's an rural setting. In an urban setting, you're limited pretty much to. Things like you've seen up on what you call the blue building where there's a, you know, it's been. Started as an ag exempt structure was found not to be compliant. We responded to the complaints. We issued a notice. And they corrected it to an residential accessory structure. Again, there's no design criteria as long as it meets setbacks and height and area requirements, we have to permit it.
So that same blue building could be built anywhere else, given the same circumstances.
That's correct.
There's no limitation to what really could be built under this. Permit.
Only the limitations established by the zone. I see Dan has some.
No, I was just responding that yes, the blue building, you know, the design criteria. You know, people can build it to look like a barn, you know, the traditional barn, they could make it look more. Like the case of the blue buildings at all metal building, but it's still as long as the uses are ag, like Mitch was saying. And, you know, let's just say you're in the thing. A writing arena used for personal use. Is an ag exempt, but as soon as you bring the public in, it's no longer ag exempt. And that's where some of a lot of those issues are coming from. And like Mitch pointed out, the fire response is huge that. In the rural areas, you know, you could have a ten thousand square foot riding arena. And there's no water and they bring three thousand gallon tanks tankers out. And the closest hydrants, you know, three miles away and they start, you know, fire operations are just immense. We actually had an ag building. Burned down last year, and I think we had eight or nine engines there for like six hours. Because of that. So that's just an issue with the building, but in an ag example, like Mitch said. If it's ag exempt, they're going to get any animals out and then. You know, pretty much the building is going to be a loss. Just because of the nature of where they're built and no water. But yeah, but the design criteria, you know, we cannot tell them it has to be an all metal building. We can't tell them it has to be shake. We can't tell. We can't do any of that. So the the looks of the building is. Only way that that is. Can be stopped is if there's a homeowners association and CCNRs.
Other comments? Okay. I thank you for all the work that you've put into this. This. Draft ordinance as well as the work sessions that we've spent, the time that we've spent on this. I think our next steps are to watch the process work out and. And leave this ordinance aside. At this time. Any other comments from the council before we close this work session?
So I agree with Madam Chair and we'll look forward to what happens with the equestrian community to do what's reasonable and feasible and. Encouraging for that particular segment of agriculture.
Right, thank you. If there are no other comments, thank you. We are going to go to our next work session, but we're going to have. A, let's say, a seven minute break or eight minute break. We'll be back at ten minutes to ten, all right? So who's who's here for the next session can arrive. Thank you all once again. Appreciate it.